Please.
Councilman Womack.
Here.
Councilman Miller.
Here.
Mayor Shelton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wheaton.
Here.
Councilman Walker.
Here.
Five present.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite those that wish to stand for the indication given out by City Manager James Mills, followed by a Pledge of Allegiance to the United States Flag.
Let us pray. Dear Father, and Father of all, thank you for your love, for your grace, for your meaning, bless you, Lord. Lord, we thank you for this city. Lord, I ask your blessing upon this city and the leadership of this city, Lord. Oh, we thank you most, Lord, for Jesus Christ, who is our God and our Savior. In this light, we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consider approval of a justice present. Are there any changes?
No change.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any comments?
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. Under four A, Consider Appellations to the Cupboard Treat Board. Terms of God, God Zimmerman and Tony Stone expire August 2021. So I'd make a motion to reappoint those two. Any discussion? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Under four B, Consider Reprovision to the Alcoholic Beverage Control Board, Mr. Coons.
The appointment of Kurt Lamb has expired on the Alcoholic Beverage Control Board. He has indicated he would serve another term, and I recommend his reappointment.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
There are old business. Slide A, Consider Approval Minutes of Council, we can hold on August 19. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
They consider on second and final reading ordinance O 210715, the rezoning of 43096 Street, and a portion of 535 North Washington Avenue from RS 15 to RS 10. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and Council members. There have been no changes to the ordinance, and we've had no calls or comments. So I ask for your approval on second and final reading.
All right. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions from the council? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Under the consent agenda, six eight seven eight ten seven twenty-one for a public hearing on ordinance two one zero nine two zero, the rezoning of property located on Asylum Church Road and England Drive, from CR Regional Commercial and RS 15 Single Family to CG General Commercial. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
I know.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. Under New Business, seven eight, Hold a Public Hearing, Consider on First Reading Ordinance O 210816 to close, abandon, and declare surplus property, a portion of Joff Drive. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and Council members. Here's the general location of the request for closure. Here's a side map of this property. This is a segment of Joff Drive located off South Jefferson Avenue. Mr. Yuri McNabb, on behalf of Teresa M. McNabb, 2008 Real Estate Partnership, has submitted a request to close, abandon, and declare surplus property, a portion of Joff Drive. This request represents the eastern terminus of Joff Drive located east of South Jefferson Avenue, that this portion of right-of-way be closed and declared as surplus property for purchase by the property owner. As depicted on a submitted survey, the segment of Joff Drive consists of approximately 95 linear feet of street with a right-of-way width of approximately 49 feet. This represents an area of point zero, of 0.10 acres, or 4,552 square feet. The right-of-way is contiguous with the property owned by the Teresa McNabb 2008 Real Estate Partnership on all sides, located at 410, 420, and 401 Joff Drive, further identified as parcel 30.02 on Tax Map 66. We've got some more maps. This is a zoomed in version. You can see this is the, these are the lot boundaries. They have purchased everything contiguous with this segment that essentially ends in their parking lot. The procedure for the closure and abandonment of streets and right-of-ways is specified in Title 16, Chapter 4 of the Cookeville Municipal Code. All applicable city departments have reviewed the closure and abandonment request. Water lines and gas lines are located within this segment of Joff Drive. You can see this is where gas lines are located within the segment. This map shows how the water lines are located. Water service is provided to the property along with additional properties with frontage on South Jefferson Avenue from a water line extending through the Putnam County Highway Department, property from East Veterans Avenue. Water Quality Control Department requests the entire area of Joff Drive right-of-way included in the request be maintained in a utility easement to accommodate any possible relocations. The Water Quality Department has plans to furnish water off South Jefferson Avenue within approximately two years, which will require water meters to be relocated and a new fire hydrant be installed. If water lines and meters are relocated, Water Quality has indicated they would be willing to abandon the utility easement. The Cookeville Gas Department does not require any additional easement. Gas service transitions from a gas main to a service line at the western boundary of the right-of-way area included in the closure request. The Gas Department considers these lines as service, gas service, and route of access is included in the Cookeville Municipal Code, Section 19-210. Commissioner McNabb has indicated he plans to utilize the property for a climate-controlled storage and Bolton recreational vehicle storage. The request to close, abandon, and declare surplus property was submitted to be able to secure the development with fencing and gates. The Teresa M. McNabb 2008 Real Estate Partnership is the only property owner affected by the request, as the partnership owns the property on all sides of the subject section of right-of-way. An analysis of the surrounding property value provides a value of $4.02 per square foot. This value is determined by the land market value as included in the real estate assessment data. The submitted survey provided the existing property consisted of around 6.85 acres, or 298,386 square feet, with the property land value assessed at $1,198,800. The petitioner did have an option to provide a market appraisal, but did not choose to do so. Here's the submitted survey for the segment of right-of-way that's requested for closure. These are some aerials from our drone. You can see, I mean, this section ends essentially at where the building is located. So this is the segment that would be abandoned. It's currently now city street. So it's essentially where the building begins in proper. So this closure request was approved by the Planning Commission as recommended by the Planning Department. I recommend your approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Do we have anyone that would like to speak about this matter? All right. We'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions from the council? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. Seven B, Hold a Public Hearing, Consider on First Reading Ordinance O 210817, Amendment to the Zoning Code to Re-Adopt and Revise in Section 208A Architectural Design Standards, Section 208A dot four B Material Standard. The proposed ordinance requires certain materials to be restricted in the construction of buildings. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and Council members. State of Tennessee Public Chapter 332 provides a specific process for the adoption of construction material standards. The Planning Department has prepared amendments to the zoning code for revision and re-adoption of certain sections pertaining to architectural design requirements. Architectural design requirements are included in Section 208A of the Cookeville Zoning Code. These standards were adopted with the intent to protect and increase the value of buildings and properties, to maintain and enhance the image and character of the community, and to ensure consistent and high-quality development. Architectural design requirements were first adopted in the Cookeville Zoning Code in 2009. These standards have been amended twice since adoption, once in 2014 and again in 2015. On April 21st, 2021, the Tennessee General Assembly passed House Bill 749 relative to construction standards. This bill, known as Public Chapter 332, was signed into law by Governor Bill Lee on May 4th, 2021. Public Chapter 332 amends Tennessee Code Annotated Section 6812101 by including a process and standards required for the adoption of architectural design requirements. The new law stipulates that any proposed requirement pertaining to construction materials must be a separate, must be a separate item on the agenda and include in bold type in all caps the following statement in a meeting notice. The proposed ordinance requires certain materials to be restricted in the construction of buildings. The consideration of a requirement pertaining to construction materials must be by a separate vote. If the requirement is to be part of a general ordinance, then the requirement pertaining to construction materials must be severable from the rest of the ordinance and voted on separately. Further, the new law states that a regulation ordinance or code adopted pursuant to construction materials shall not prohibit a particular construction material that is approved by a National Building Code or the state fire marshal. Regulations must allow for consideration of waivers in whole or in part during the development process. Section 208A four B of the zoning code provides material standards for construction in the city of Cookeville. These are specifically included in 208A four B one, and I've included those on your screen. Section 208 four B two provides for prohibitive materials, with some exceptions listed, included metal siding or metal panels, aluminum composite material, and standard concrete block on the rear or sides of structures when painted to blend or match with the front of a structure with approval of the Architectural Design Review Board. Planning Department has prepared amendments to the zoning code, Section 208 four B one, to re-adopt the construction material standards to include exceptions covered in Section 208A four B two. The read is followed. So we took the exceptions that were included in the code and added those into our acceptable materials. Public Chapter 332 disallows prohibiting materials that are approved by a National Building Code or state fire marshal. Section 208 four B Material Standards of the Zoning Code in Section Two includes prohibited materials, and Section Three provides for exceptions to use prohibited materials that currently reads as shown on your screen. Two sections where things, where certain materials are prohibited. The Planning Department has prepared a revision to the zoning code to delete Section Two with the exceptions included now in the acceptable materials. Section Three has been renumbered to Section Two, and the word prohibited has been removed with the word other substituted in all but one instance. So this is how the revised text would read in the zoning code. Section 208A does include an appeals process to consider waivers through the establishment of the Architectural Design Review Board. The Planning Department reviewed this legislation with our city attorney. We recommended re-adoption of our current standards and revisions in accordance with Public Chapter 332. Construction materials requirements must be considered by a separate vote from proposed revisions. So we've separated this into two ordinances. So the ordinance under this item is a re-adoption of our acceptable materials required by the architectural design review requirements in accordance with Public Chapter 332. So these revisions were recommended by the Planning Commission as prepared and recommended by the Planning Department, and happy to answer any questions the council has.
Thank you. This time, we'll open the public hearing portion of the meeting. Anyone like to speak about this matter? We'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I move.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions from the council?
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Seven C, Hold a Public Hearing, Consider on First Reading Ordinance O 210818, Amendments to the Zoning Code, revised in Section 208A Architectural Design Standards, Section 208A dot four B Material Standard by deleting prohibited materials. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and Council members. Well, I've discussed this in the earlier ordinance. What this ordinance does is it deletes the prohibited materials and does a revision to the zoning code to renumber some of the sections to bring this into compliance with Public Chapter 332. Happy to answer any questions the council has on this, but this was also approved by the Planning Commission as prepared and recommended by the Planning Department.
Again, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak about this matter? Close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions from the council?
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. Seventy, Hold a Public Hearing, Consider on First Reading Ordinance O 210919, Amending Budgets to the General Fund and General Improvement Bond Fund, City of Cookeville for the fiscal year ended June 2022. Ms. Emel.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, we are requesting your approval on first reading to amend the general fund budget by increasing the appropriations for revenue by $10,000 and expenditures and transfers out by $1,771,989. This ordinance also amends the budget for the General Improvement Bond Fund by increasing revenues and transfers in by $1,700,000. The $1,700,000 transfer from the general fund to the bond fund is to use general fund fund balance rather than bond proceeds to fund the FFNE purchases for the new police station. And we're recommending this and feel that we can do this because fiscal year 21 ended very strong, and we're starting fiscal year 22 with a fund balance of over $28 million in the fund balance of general fund. And if you recall, the fiscal year 22 budget, we had budgeted an original deficit of like one and a half million dollars to cover capital assets that we wanted to purchase. So with this additional reduction in our fund balance, our fund balance will end this fiscal year. We're still just under $25 million. So we'll still be in a very strong position. This will have no negative impact on our bond rating or our fiscal year 22 operations. The other amendment items in this ordinance are to make appropriations for the carpet at the town center based on the agreement council approved last meeting. And also, there was some turnout here that we had approved for the fire department back in March, and that is not able to be received and delivered until later this fall. So we're basically rolling forward that budget to this fiscal year. And I'll be happy to answer any questions, but I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. We'll open the public hearing. Does anyone like to speak about this matter? We'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions from the council? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. Seventy, Consider Authorizing City Manager, Sign Award Terms and Conditions and Assurances of Compliance Documents Required to Accept the American Rescue Plan Act Funding allocated to City of Cookeville. Ms. Emel.
Mayor and Council, the American Rescue Plan Act was enacted in March of 2021 and included local fiscal recovery funds for cities and counties in the country. Cookeville is considered a non-entitlement unit that's an NEU, and will receive its funding through the state of Tennessee. These funds are to be paid out in two installments with 50% paid out now and 50% later. The funds must be spent or obligated by December 31st, 2024. In the state of Tennessee, the state has created a portal for NEUs to use to request their funds. In order to request the city's first payment, we must submit contract documents through the portal to the state. The first document is the Award Terms and Conditions document, which asserts our commitment to comply with all federal laws and regulations for these funds, and these are federal funds, so they'll be subject to single audit. And the assurances of compliance is certification of our Title VI Non-Discrimination Compliance. I would recommend your authorization of the city manager to sign these required documents in order for us to receive our ARP, ARPA money from the state of Tennessee.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions?
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Seven L, Consider Changes to the Employee Health Insurance Plan. Ms. Emel.
Thank you, Mayor. The city has maintained a self-insured plan for employees and retirees since 1998. Blue Cross Blue Shield is our TPA and administers the plan for us. We carry stop-loss coverage to protect the plan against catastrophic claims. Not up until 2017, we offered this one PPO plan, and then in 2017, we added the high deductible plan and the tier employee plus one to the plan. And since 2017, we have not made any changes in premiums or designs to the plan. So we currently have a PPO plan, a high deductible plan with three tiers, single coverage, employee plus one, and family coverage. And as of June 30th, we had 534 contracts and covered 1,167 lives. And we have seen, you know, the same as the rest of the country, significant increases in our medical and prescription drug claims, approximately 33% increase in Blue Cross Blue Shield claims for fiscal year 21. And as you recall, when we approved the stop-loss contract for the new year, we had a significant increase in our premiums for stop-loss by about 26%. This slide kind of gives you a 10-year history of our medical claims that have been paid out of the fund for Blue Cross Blue Shield, and you can see the one-year significant increase. We ended fiscal year 21 with $5.8 million in medical claims. And then what that did to our plan is had a sharp drop in our fund balance or reserves, and we ended the fiscal year with $3.5 million in the plan. So with the significant rise of claims and the trends for the future, we are recommending some changes to our plan. And our plan year is on a calendar year, so these changes are going to be for January 1st, 2022. And what we looked at is a combination of some things. So the first thing is, is changes in plan deductibles and out-of-pocket. So we're looking, recommending increasing the deductible by $500 for single coverage. It has currently been $1,000 since 2011, so that would take it to $1,500. Increasing the out-of-pocket by $500 for single coverage, it's currently $2,500, so it would go to $3,000. And the deductible and out-of-pocket for the family coverage would be two times that. And then we're also looking at premium increases. So our recommendation there is to increase the amount of the premium that the city is paying contributing to the plan by 6%. So for single coverage, the city would contribute an additional $22. For employee plus one coverage, $43. And for family coverage, $63. And that's on the monthly premium. And then for employees, active employees, we're asking them to contribute an additional $5 for single coverage, $10 for employees plus one, and $15 for family coverage. So between the two of those scenarios, Blue Cross Blue Shield estimates with the change in deductibles, we could have, the plan could have a reduction in claims of about $200,000. And I'm estimating, using July's information, that the change in premiums should add an additional 217,000 to the plan, of which 215,000 would be paid for by the city of that increase. So the combination of both changes should have a positive impact to the plan of about $470,000. And this does impact our retirees, because our retirees on our plan, but the impact will vary. For those under 65, they pay a portion of the premium based on their years of service. And for retirees over 65, it'll have no impact on what they pay. So this gives you an idea here. This is the PPO plan. It's a lot of information there, but I show the current premiums and the proposed premiums, and we're going to continue the wellness incentive that we currently have. So you can see the premiums there with wellness and without wellness. And you can see I've got a line in there for the change right here. So $27 is the increase in total premiums for employee only, of which $5 is coming from the employees, $22 from the city. And for employee plus warrant, the premium is going up $53, which $10 is coming from employees, $43 from the city, and the increase in the premiums for family coverage is $78, with 15 coming from the employee and 63 being contributed by the city. And then down here for the PPO plan, like I had mentioned, the current deductible is $1,000 for single coverage, and we're going to increase that to $1,500. And then the current deductible or out-of-pocket is $2,500, and that'll go to $3,000. And again, family coverage will be two times that. And then I show you the same thing here for the high deductible, but the increases are the same for that plan. So I'll be happy to answer any, and for dental, we're not making any recommended changes for the dental premiums. They'll stay the same for 2022. I'll be happy to answer any questions, but would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions from the council? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Seven G, Consider Approval to Renew Office 365 for Government Subscription Sponsor. Mr. Quarter.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, this item is asking for your approval to renew our annual Office 365 for government subscription. This would allow us to continue using our Office 365 software and services through September 2022. This year, we're going to be renewing 165 G1 licenses, 180 G3 licenses, and five VZO Pro licenses for a total cost of $51,550. The vendor for this is SHI, and we'd be using the state of Tennessee's NASPO purchasing contract. This is a budgeted item, and I ask for your approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Consider Approval to Purchase VMware vSphere Software. Mr. Quarter.
Mayor and Council, this item is asking for your approval to purchase and upgrade our VMware vSphere software licenses. vSphere is server virtualization software that we've been using for several years. This upgrade would give us new functionality and would allow us to double the number of our virtualization hosts. This is needed as we expand and incorporate the police department's IT infrastructure. This would purchase licenses for 10 processors and one management server along with 12 months of support and upgrades. The total cost for this purchase is $14,560. The vendor for this is SHI, and we would be using the state of Tennessee's NASPO purchasing contract. This is a budgeted item, and I ask for your approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any questions from the council?
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Seven I, Consider Approval of Engineering Contract Amendment for Additional Services Related to Multimodal Access Grand Project on East Spring Street Sidewalks. Mr. Brown.
Mayor and Council, first I'd like to show you the timeline of the project as we stand right now. The city applied for the grant in December of 2014, and the contract grant was executed in November of 2015. The plans were started in 2016, and from 2016 to 2021, the plans have been submitted and reviewed and resubmitted, and the right-of-way has been obtained. Where we stand right now, the right-of-way has been certified, and the construction plans have been concurred on. Contract amendment requesting is broken down into three parts. From 2016 to 21, Reagan Smith has submitted, revised, and resubmitted the plans more times than was anticipated when their contract started. Most of these resubmittals were the result of ongoing TDOT guidance and process changes, required design changes, in addition to new standards as the review process took place. The pandemic also had a significant impact on the review process since March of 2020. There were also some significant delays in obtaining property from some of the tracks, since some of the owners were out of town, and that created quite a problem to get all the paperwork out. The number of submittals required in response to comments was much more than could have been anticipated at the beginning of the project, and the cost of the work already completed by the consultant to date outside of the original contract is $20,000. After the plans were approved for construction, an estimated cost for the project was calculated. Estimated costs significantly exceeded the budgeted amount due to the cost increases. The original estimate with a grant is seven years old, and design changes as part of the review process. The original scope included sidewalks from Denton Avenue to Old Kentucky Road on East Spring Street, as well as on Carlin Drive and on Raider Drive to Avery Trace School. The new scope will install sidewalks on East Spring Street from Old Kentucky Road to Raider Drive, and on Raider Drive from East Spring Street to Avery Trace School. The existing plan and cost estimate will be revised to reflect the change in scope. The planned provisions and bidding costs to get the project within the original construction budget is $20,500.
services for the fairgrounds of Intercept or Sewer Project. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, in the process of doing design work for the, call it fairgrounds, it serves the fairground properties on Tennessee Avenue, while we were at 60% of design, this is sort of a interstate, that's where we're going to start and go north towards the site. And in the preliminary review, we review Fish and Wildlife as the keeper of the wetland inventory. And so we had some wetlands showing up here, so the design started to bypass that. So we got around it and ended up with this at 60% of the design. Engineer brought it to us for our review. Right at that moment, we got it, we got notified by the Corps of Engineers that they had been requested by the property owner to come do a wetland determination on their property. So we received that report. And so a lot of the property is in wetlands. So the negative of that is we would have to go through and do, get an individual permit, mitigate the wetlands, purchase wetland bank, which is very costly. So we asked, requested the engineer, let's, can we get around it, minimize the impacts, and go and try to get a general A-RAP permit from the state? Talking to the state, they said that was possible. And so we've asked the engineer to redesign around that, and we have a price of $19,246, which will be some engineering and redesign, and I'd recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No move.
Motion second. Any comments or questions from the council? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Seven K, consider approval of engineering contract amendment for additional design services for the fairgrounds of Intercept or Sewer Project. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, in the process of doing design work for the, call it fairgrounds, it serves the fairground properties on Tennessee Avenue, while we were at 60% of design, this is sort of a interstate, that's where we're going to start and go north towards the site. And in the preliminary review, we review Fish and Wildlife as the keeper of the wetland inventory. And so we had some wetlands showing up here, so the design started to bypass that. So we got around it and ended up with this at 60% of the design. Engineer brought it to us for our review. Right at that moment, we got it, we got notified by the Corps of Engineers that they had been requested by the property owner to come do a wetland determination on their property. So we received that report. And so a lot of the property is in wetlands. So the negative of that is we would have to go through and do, get an individual permit, mitigate the wetlands, purchase wetland bank, which is very costly. So we asked, requested the engineer, let's, can we get around it, minimize the impacts, and go and try to get a general A-RAP permit from the state? Talking to the state, they said that was possible. And so we've asked the engineer to redesign around that, and we have a price of $19,246, which will be some engineering and redesign, and I'd recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No move.
Motion second. Any comments or questions from the council? Yes, Councilman Miller.
Will this allow that subdivision online, like Creek Road, to eventually get sewer?
Yeah, I'll make sure that part of the lines.
Yeah, part west.
Oh, yes, yes. Yeah, and we've got another project in the works also that's going to be coming, let me go back one more slide, a project in the works that's going to be tying in here and going towards the interchange with the Sheridan airs. And so some of that, we'll be able to incorporate that. It's not in this project, but it will be available to do that.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Seven L, consider resolution R-210923 to acquire by donation, negotiation, or eminent domain certain land rights relating to extension of sanitary sewer lines of Tennessee Avenue. Ronnie Kelly.
Okay. Mayor and council, this is a resolution authorizing the city manager to acquire the properties necessary for that project. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. City attorneys reviewed it, and I would recommend approval.
Entertaining motion?
No move.
Second. Any comments or questions? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Seven M, consider approval of engineering contract site suitability and preliminary engineering report adding generators at the water plant. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we were looking at the possibility of adding generators down at our water plant. There's a couple of sectors, a sectional, maybe hard to see, but hopefully on your screen. Water plant sits here, intake structure sits down here on the lake. There is a section, the power line, upper coming electric line follows the road, but there's a section that cuts cross-country. And that is a, sort of a weak link in that section down there. So we've, we're in communication with upper coming about resolving that issue. But long-term, we're looking at adding generators at that location. I've requested the engineering company that's, that has done the design on the last couple of water plant projects and is doing and finishing up the current water plant expansion project along with their electrical engineer to give us a price to do a preliminary engineering study on what we need to do to get that done. And so I'd recommend approval. The cost of that project, or the cost of that is, I think, $25,000.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No move.
Motion second. Any questions from the council? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Seven N, consider approval of engineering contract amendment number one for site suitability and preliminary engineering report, TT pump station and storage facility. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, this is the Tennessee Tech sewer basin in this light color. And so recently, we met with Tennessee Tech. They shared some of their long-range 20-year plans, and we're in the middle of a preliminary engineering report how to upgrade that pump station and add some wet weather storage at that location. Sewer line, our pump station's located right here, and so all of tech in that area drains to that station. Oops. Well, maybe that was my last slide. And so what we did, we, we have, went back to the engineer that's doing the study and said, hey, we really need to take a look at tech's future. They've sort of tied some of that down and take a look at their projected flows for the next 20 years. How's, how's it going to affect that pump station and the EQ basin that we want to place there? And so we've asked them to give us a price to modify that. Their agreement, and they've given us a price of $9,199 to the existing contract and would add 15 days to their contract, and I'd recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No move.
Motion second. Any comments or questions? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Seven L, consider resolution R-210924 authorize it's the middle of a hazard mitigation grant application to Tennessee Emergency Management Agency, Mr. Ward.
Mayor and council members, the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program is administered to the Tennessee Emergency Management Agency and provides funds to communities to reduce or eliminate future risk to lives and property from natural hazards. Eligible projects are meant to reduce the need for future federal assistance from disaster recovery through mitigation. The Hazard Mitigation Grant is a 75-25% grant, match grant. In typical grant cycles, the state of Tennessee provides 12.5% of the 25% local match, which reduces grant costs of the community to 12.5% of the total grant amount. Cookville Kitchen Sales located at 1075 Willow Industrial Court is located in a commercial industrial area north of Interstate 40 off South Willow Avenue and Forman Drive on Willow Industrial Court. Development of this area began in the late 1980s, late 1990s. The Cookville Kitchen Sales building was constructed in 2001. The property has experienced two significant flood events in the last, in the past 19 months. The first of the two flooding instances occurred during a flood event on February 6, 2020. During this event, water inundated the structure to approximately 10 inches. See, we have interior photos of how that flood event impacted the property. The property owner did not have flood insurance coverage when this event occurred. The planning department, working with the property owner's insurance agent, assisted the property owner with obtaining flood insurance. A second event occurred on March 27, 28, 2021, and this event inundated the structure to approximately 30 inches. Although the property owner did have flood insurance coverage, damages and losses exceeded coverage amounts. We've got some pictures of this event, too. Since they overnight, how high the rains got up to the building. This business employs 22 full-time employees and eight contract employees for a total of 30 employees. The area is not in a FEMA-designated special flood hazard area, but is located in a CCO retention area overlay zone. The property is low-lying and drains by karst features. So after the work session on Monday, we prepared a revision to the resolution. This revised resolution, before the council tonight, commits the city of Cookeville to provide the required 12.5% local match through a combination of in-kind contributions in the form of demolition of the structure, removal of the hardscape, and placement of the property in the open green space. Any balance of the required mashing funds are to be provided by the property owner as the resolution has, is revised. This is a competitive grant program. You know, there is no guarantees the city would be awarded this, but we feel like this would be an opportunity to pursue based on the last two-year histories on this property. I respectfully ask for council's approval of this resolution, and I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No move.
Motion second. Any comments or questions from the council? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes our agenda portion of the meeting. We have time at the end for anyone that'd like to speak, address the council on non-agenda items. Oh, nope, sorry. Yeah, we do have that. We'll do that first. No, no one do that. All right, now we have nine, nine A here, report on recent bond sales.
Thank you, mayor.
The Tennessee game awaits. Let's get through this.
I'll go really quick, just a few slides. We recently had two bond transactions that I wanted to give you an update on. In July, we sold the Series 2021A bonds, and the purpose of those bonds was to refund the 2015 bonds. The original amount of those bonds was $9,815,000, and those were borrowed to construct Tennessee Avenue. Moody's rated our bonds AA2. That was the same rating, no change in the rating from our previous bond sales. The attorney opinion was issued, and those were considered tax-exempt bank-qualified. These bonds closed and were dated on July 30th, and our interest rate, the low bid, was from Piper Sandler at .975676. And you can see here, the savings and net present value of the refunded bond was $467,690. We saved nearly 7% on refinancing those bonds. And the second bond issue was the amount that you guys had authorized in August of 2020 to build the police station and other projects. So we did the Series 2021B. Those were sold and closed also in July. Well, they closed in August, but they sold in July. And we issued $9,175,000 in general obligation bonds. Those were also rated by Moody's as AA2 and considered tax-exempt bank-qualified, and the lowest, the true interest cost on those were 1.31% there. And you can see here, we sold $9,175,000 in bonds. The bond issue cost and underwriters' discounts was $131,761, leaving available $9,724,000 available for the project that'll be used to finish up the police station, and we will have about under $4 million available to get started on some transportation projects. And then to give you an update, on July 1st, we had $18,785,000 in debt outstanding. We had no variable-rate debt. After these two transactions, we now have $27,790,000 in general obligation bonds outstanding. And that shows you the debt service requirements on these bonds. The annual debt service is just, just around $3 million. And in the debt service fund, we're putting about $4 million in there annually, so we still have capacity for additional debt service. And as of June 30th, we started the new fiscal year with 11, about 11.5 million in the debt service fund. So that's it. Just wanted to give you an update on the bond transactions that we had.
Any comments from the council?
I did want to wish our Herald Citizen editor, Lindsay Pride, happy birthday today. It's actually your birthday two days, so happy birthday.
Yep. We're adjourned.[1733.83]